A call to order the meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the town of Sevastopol on Monday, April 21 at 7:00. I'll ask that you rise with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Supervisor Weidman?
Here.
Supervisor Teis?
Here.
Chairman Zipper?
Here.
Supervisor Wolfel?
Here.
And Supervisor Stavnis?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Next item would be the public participation, the meet and greet, which we normally do. I don't know if you all kept track of who we all were, we don't have to reintroduce. But the lady on the end is our Yale Friday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Linda Wade, also a clerk treasurer. Why don't we go to Linda first? Tell us who you are, where you live.
Linda Schultz, Mary Randy Schultz. We live on Highway 57. The address is 4766 Highway 57.
Very good. All right. Carrie? Carrie is a candidate for the Wisconsin Assembly. She's here tonight, now allow you a couple minutes to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm happy to be here and be able to talk to the people of Sevastopol. I'd just like to introduce myself, that I'm a small businessman. I've been running my business, McNulty Survey and Mapping, for 16 years. I actually have two professional licenses, land surveyor and real estate sales. So I do have an interest in, and I'm in favor of these property tax reforms and property rights issues. I'm a family man. I have twin daughters, and my wife Lori was my high school sweetheart. I'm committed to making my community a better place. I have a track record of making sound decisions. I have over 20 years served in the Army Reserve, I retired First Sergeant. I'm an active leader in the Forestville American Legion, actually the current commander of the Forestville American Legion. I'm the current president of the Village of Forestville, I've been on the village board for five years. I'm the outgoing treasurer of Southern Door School Board. And I'm in favor of holding taxes down, and I was an influential member of that Southern Door School Board, where our school is very highly ranked. I've made ordinances, past ordinances, and I think, I don't think we need any more laws in this state. There are some things we need to clean up, and that's what I'd like to have a chance to go down to Madison to do, is hold down, hold down the government from limiting, limit the government from intervening with our business, and clean up some of the poor legislation. I think I have the experience to take this next step, and I look forward to working with the towns on issues facing us and your future. Thank you.
Good luck. And the young lady that just came in, just in time for the meet and greet, tell us who you are and...
My name is Chris Anderson, and I am here to answer any questions about Edith Manson, various.
Okay, first thing was?
Chris Anderson.
Okay, well, welcome in. Behind the video camera is the one and only, what's her name? Lottie Chapman.
(inaudible).
Kind of watch yourself on the tube, he's on 987. 987.
Charter.
Okay, we're all caught up with that. Let's go on to the agenda, it's been properly noticed?
Yes, it has been.
Need a motion then to approve.
So...
So we have two moves and...
And I'll second it, too.
There you go. Questions or comments about anything appearing thereon?
Do we move in the new business items nine and 10 up?
You want to do that where?
Wherever you can fit it in.
You want to go forward?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get to that one first. Any other change? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's carried. Approval of the minutes, Board of Supervisors for February 24 of 2014.
Make that a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Chuck, seconded. Was it by Chuck or not?
Yep.
And a second by John. Any corrections or questions, additions, subtractions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Financial reports for February and March 2014, the account balances versus the budget and the actual transactions for those months. Are there any questions or comments?
(inaudible) as fast as it comes in.
Okay, hearing none, need a motion then to accept and place on file.
I move that we approve the February and the March financial reports. Second, balances.
Hearing no other comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we have any oral committee reports? Or committee commission minutes? We do have, part of your packet was a planned commission of February 18, 2014. And the Park and Rec Board meeting of September 24. We don't have any from the other night yet?
No.
Do you have any oral committee reports? Chuck, did you have anything you wanted to...
No, we only had an executive meeting this month, nothing to report on.
Okay, licenses and permits, zoning and building permits issued would be for the month of February end for the month of March. That would be independent inspection limited. Do you have any questions or comments?
Just one comment.
Yes?
Our tax bills, or I should say our tax levy should go down. For somebody that's building a home on Glidden Drive, it will help us significantly.
Very good. Okay, and the other would be the March permits to the shooting by the County of Door. Okay, unless on John's request, it go down to new business number nine. It would be the Schultz application for conditional use permit, the trade contractor establishment, lawn care, and firewood operation at 4766 State Highway 57, just north of Institute, it's (inaudible) address. John, you want to take care of it?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're applying for a conditional use permit. They're gonna run a lawn care and firewood business out of the, out of their house. From what I understand, from Linda, they applied to put up a sign out front, and then they had to go for the conditional use permit. They have 20 acres, and it is zoned countryside. There is quite a few pine trees between there, where they're working, and the highway. So, and there's a business on both sides of them, across the road, I mean, and on the north side of them. He sells feed, and the other one's an upholstery business.
And the action of your committee was?
The action of our committee was to recommend to the town board, recommend to the town board, for the town board to recommend to the RPC for approval.
Linda, you wish to speak?
We've been kind of doing the lawn care business for a few years now. What we did is we bought a portable processor, and we can't process on our property, we're trying to stay behind, just trees and everything, and the processor will probably stay there, but it's a portable processor, so it will go onsite to different spots. But other than that, nothing much has changed from what we're doing before. We're not going to have people coming in, blowing into our, or anything like that. It's basically, we sell it by phone and deliver it. But it's just a matter of, we're letting them put up a sign to advertise, and that's how this all kind of started to take place, how that we had to have a conditional use permit.
I believe the information that you got from our inspector had to do with onsite sales?
Yeah.
And/or you were going to be using your office?
Yeah, and we're not. No, that's, that wasn't a part of it.
All right.
Did she make, did Kay make you aware of that, about the commercial building when you applied, I mean, when you went?
No, I didn't have a lot of contact with Kay because she gave me a different girl to work with.
Okay, but they really didn't mention anything?
No, no. But we knew this all along, because from the first time we changed it to countryside, when we went through some of the things, if we ever wanted to put up a commercial building, how we'd have to go about doing it. And we had no intent of, you know, using it for that purpose right now.
But I mean, as far as your existing buildings?
And, yeah, we were aware of that before this even...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, your operation is totally outside?
Yes.
You don't have any...
The bundle part is self-service.
Anticipated need that you're going to enclose it, or under it?
No, no. We did apply for our permit last year. We have a 40 by 50 foot building that we're putting up. It's 14 foot sided walls, and it's also going next to our other buildings. But that's just to store all the equipment, the trucks and everything, so it's outside.
Okay. John?
I said that she has the self-serve wood rack out, out in the front, but that's...
Yeah, that's it.
Not covered.
All right, any questions of Linda? Do we have a motion to approve and recommend, correct?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the RPC for approval.
Second.
Okay, without any further question, all in favor of the motion, signify and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck. Thanks for coming. Okay, as long as we have one other member in the audience, why don't we go down to...
Number 10.
Number 10.
This is...
And Chris, you're here for that one, so John, why don't you bring it forward?
All right. Edith Manson put in a petition to grant a variance, and we have Chris Anderson here representing her. She's worked with Kay Miller, and on trying, if you look on, well, first of all, they have two separate wetland on their property, and they were working hard to meet all the setbacks. But they, the house is almost U-shaped with the garage, or the buildable lot. If you look on the map, on like the third or fourth page back, you can, you can see the buildable area that comes out to a point on the one side. And they worked very hard to build a garage and try to stay within as much of that buildable area as they can. The house is on one side, the garage is on the other. The proposed wetland is right in the middle of the lot. So they're going to have a retaining wall around, what, three quarters of it? Just to try and, to protect that wetland. And the, in the left-hand corner of the buildable area is where the well was going to go?
The lower left.
The lower left, yes. And then the, where was the holding tank going, in the front?
Across, across from where it says proposed gravel, across between proposed gravel and the road.
So I guess they tried really hard, and we gave them a A for effort, and the planning commission recommend to approve, recommend to recommend to the RPC that the town approve the grant of variance. And there were some...
So what is the request to the, is for a grant, grant of variance?
Because of the setbacks, they're...
In the wetland?
They're bumping set, yeah, they're, they're too close to the wetlands, they're too close to the, are they too close to the side lots still?
Yeah.
I think so.
So I, am I correct in assuming that it's, they don't meet the 62.5 from the center of the right-of-way?
No, we do not.
Correct.
And the section 510, which states 10 feet from any wetland, or 4.3 of the Door County flood plain, they don't meet the 15 feet of compacted fill?
Right.
Shall expand the elevation of 101.2. Is that all correct?
Yes.
Well...
Do they meet anything?
No.
They meet nothing.
And they wanted to build a house, I mean, they were going to retire, and they want to build a house that they can at least live in.
When we initially, if I may, started the development of the house, we, I met with Kay numerous times with plans, plenary plans, and then with the surveyor. We had him put the house on the plot, and then took it to Kay, and Kay said, "No, it's too big, it's too long, you can do this, this, this." So then we shrunk it, and we did this, and we did that. So the end result is what you see, and this is something that Kay has indicated was reasonable, as she used the word. So that's pretty much all I can add to this. Just that, you know, it's not something we just kind of went to a planner and an architect, and then just brought to Kay. I sat down with her probably five, six different times in the last two years, trying to come up with a reasonable plan.
Are neighbors on either side?
There is neighbors to the west that have been established since the 60s, and to the east, there's a brand-new home being built right now. There were three lots, and Edith purchased the left, there were three-ish, purchased the left one as you look at the lake. Then two other guys just recently, in the last year, purchased the other two, and one is building, the one in the center.
The stair steps in the front of the house is trying to meet this setback for the curvature of the road to a certain extent?
Mm-hmm.
If you see that today?
This?
That, stirp, stirp, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know what that was.
On the side of the building, that's why they did that, that way, instead of squaring it off.
Because the road curves that way. About three doors to the west, a new home was built a couple years ago, and they were granted a closer variance, a setback to the road. And that's what Kay said, if we stay within that footage, that, that would be considered reasonable, which we have.
So we've had no neighbors that have had any issue with this?
Uh, no. The neighbor, the one neighbor that's building now has, has built his property up quite a bit, so I think there's going to be a little bit of runoff from their property into this property, but...
Okay.
And, you know, most of that land down there could be dependent on who you talk to, all the way along that, sure, could be wetland. I think if you talk to every different person, you could get 10 different answers.
Yeah, it's classified. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I went out there and took a look at the property, and in my humble opinion, it's rather sunken or at a lower level than the existing to the north or south.
Yeah.
And although I'm in favor of owners and people to be able to use their property as they see fit, I have a little problem with not meeting any of the requirements that have been set forth by the, by the Door County Board. I did notice by your survey here that the existing building to the west is 52 feet from the water, 60 feet from the center line, and 20 feet from the west lot line, all of which I think are a little bit further than what you're showing on your application. I am having a problem in supporting this, but I'll listen to the rest of the comments here before we ask for the vote.
Well...
Richard, you want to be first?
Yeah, I think the house, the new house construction to the west, yeah, is going to present some problems to you. I mean, it's pretty obvious they've raised the grade of that property at least three or four feet, I would say, properly, so, I mean, that, that's going to be, but considering the existing homes that are there right now, I, the committee took that into consideration and did not, you know, felt that the request for variance by this party was in line with some of the other requests that had been granted previously.
So, our house needs to be, our house is going to be at the level probably of the neighbors to the west.
Right, I would think you would.
And our, our property is going to have retaining walls on the west side, which Kay said we had to put up.
Towards the other house?
Correct.
Right, I mean, you'd almost have to.
Well, we know that, and we, we are prepared to do that because of, of the soil, and, and it has to be tapered accordingly. But, you know, when you look at the height of that foundation, and we're, we have to be a foot below the actual structure of the house, so we have approximately a foot of foundation out of the ground, and then you taper it back down, we are probably going to be putting in approximately 18 to two-foot retaining wall. It's not going to be a three or four-foot high retaining wall, because we have to have slope, and we have to stay below the foundation where the floor system is. So if you, if you looked at the house, three doors down to the west, that was newly done, they too had to do the same thing, as did the others that were close to the beach. Those folks had to do the same thing, and they tapered down into low land. And each of those houses developed their landscaping accordingly, and their wall retaining structures as well. And it's, it's a given, I mean, the house next door to the west, that gentleman built the house in, I think, 64 or 65, when, and quite frankly, he built in the front part of his property, because it does not contour to the same as our existing land. So we have had, I mean, his house is low, and that's just, you know, the way it is. I mean, our lot is low too, but we are very aware that we have to build that up, and very aware that we will maintain any type of wall retention, keep the soil and aesthetic looking correct and everything like that.
Okay, so you are representing Ms. Manson?
Yes.
And you are, are you related to her?
No, I'm not. I'm actually overseeing the entire project.
You're an architect designer, whatever?
Excuse me?
Architect designer?
No, I'm, I'm a fool that likes to take on big projects. No, I, I, I'm neither of those. I am, but I am involved, allotting various buildings. My family's in building, so I come by it naturally, so...
Okay. How big is this house, Ms.?
A little under 2,000 square feet. I think it's, I think petition says 18.9 or 19.8.
Only because I don't know, can, it's showing right now that the wetland is in the center of this parcel.
Yes.
So does the code allow the fill of that wetland?
No.
No.
No, you, they're going to build the re...
So they're actually going to do it here and here?
They're going to build the retaining wall around it to preserve it, so, and they cannot put anything in that wetland.
The retaining wall needs to go down to a hardened surface, or?
No, it'd, it'd be like, um, large, you know, great big flat limestone's being brought in and building a retaining wall, and, you know, that's, that's what we're planning to put in, which, the house to the east of the beach, Kay told me to look at what they did, because she said they did exactly what needs to be done, they did a great job. And they've had a landscaper come in, and they caressed their property, their, their setback down to the low part of their property. And, I mean, they had low land down there as well, and they had large stones, and, you know, much like you see a lot of landscaping around here, that's, that's the type of retaining wall we're going to put in.
So the impervious surface that they're showing on this little drawing would be, what, about 28, 30 feet from the ordinary high-water mark? I'm looking at the drawing, or the measurement to the far right of the page.
63 feet.
63, those, down on the shorefront, Kay has put plates and measurements, you know, we're, we're at the, you know, when you said 50-some feet from the setback, I'm not sure what that measurements you were coming from, or where you had those measurements?
Well, I just saw the very first one, it looks like it's coming from the ordinary high-water mark at 28 feet, and otherwise you can say it's 177 feet, but...
No, that 28 feet is the first land pin, the surveyor's pin.
Surveyor's pin, but...
Yeah.
You know, you go all the way back to the center of the roadway.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the petitioner here? Richard?
None.
Chuck?
Well, I believe this is the kind of stuff the zoning ordinance was meant to, to prevent from happening, but it's, in my opinion, this lot should have never been sold, it was a buildable lot. The deed is done, and the people own it now, they should have a right to build on it. If this is the best situation you can come up with, I'll be in agreement with it, but I think our county zoning and our town planning department need to start looking at some of these lots before they're actually developed.
Is anybody besides Leo, have you been out there?
Yes, I was out there.
I regret to say I was not, so...
Yes, I, I inspected it too.
All right, did you have a comment, Dan?
No, I didn't. I feel somewhat like you and like Chuck, the same thing, it's, I just don't want to see what we had on the end of Glidden, or Cape Point, you know, where we, still want to see when those crop up again.
But in the, in Chuck's comment, the planning commission doesn't have anything to do with the lots, that would be the county zoning that makes the lots, and lets them divide the lots. So the town itself, or the planning, we would not have any knowledge of that even, so...
But I, I do believe it would be something we could look into and start questioning.
But if it's already broke down and sold, and...
That's why I said, the deed is done here, and I would go along with this plan.
All right.
I make a motion...
In the future, I think we need to look at the way the... In the future, I think we need to look at the way the land is divided.
Or maybe in, in a situation like this, and I'll add one other comment, I should have gone out there myself and looked at it, so I have a better feel for it, because I mean, I, I feel the same way as everybody else. I'll support it, but I, I don't like it, so.
If I, yeah, I mean, if I may add, I mean, if you would go out there right now, you would find a very, very wet lot. And it's because we've had a very, very wet year. And, and last year, we had a very wet spring, and there was a lot of water on it as is right now. Quite frankly, there was more water on it last spring at this time of the year, and in a very short time, it was dry. It's, um, you would think after a long, a hard rain, that little wetlands there would fill up, but it truly doesn't, and, which gave us more comfort, because quite frankly, when I first went out there myself, after she purchased it and saw all that water laying there, thought, whoa, you know, and I feel comfortable in what we're going to do, and just so I might add, Edith is a very conservation-oriented person, and a very, a person that is very careful to follow the rules. And we certainly don't want to do something, and then someone comes to us and says, you can't do that, and then we have to redo it. That is not what we want to do. So if you have suggestions or recommendations that would help our situation here, I'm sure we would love to hear them. But like you say, you know, the deed is done. It is deemed a buildable lot, so if we can go from there, if there's any recommendations.
Okay, and I'm surprised you got this much out of her, you know, to, to give you this much leeway.
Well, she-
If she's satisfied with it, I, you know, it's probably the best you can do.
And I'm not embellishing in any way. I have worked very closely with Kay, and, and she has given me good feedback that I think this is reasonable, as I keep saying. She keeps saying that, I think this is reasonable. So, that's all I can add to that.
I think, in my opinion too, is if she hadn't worked so closely with Kay, the plan commission would not even have given this a second thought, because, like you said, there's a lot of setbacks that they're not making, but, you know.
The thing you worry about is, is that this, the next person comes along and has the same situation, now it becomes, well, you did it for one, for the other. I'm okay with it, it's just, it's, it's a bad deal.
I make a motion to recommend to the RPC for approval of the grant of variance for Edith Madsen.
Second.
Okay, so we do have a motion in a second to approve, and moving on to the Door County RPC for the purpose of, or in support of issuing the grant of variance.
Right.
All in favor, signify with a say no.
Aye.
Opposed, then I'll go on record as opposed. And if I need to give a reason, my reason for opposing was the, the physical characteristics of the property really prevent the applicant from developing, and that's the way it should have been from the beginning. You do have to present to the board that it causes an unnecessary hardship in the event that they don't approve this, and also that the granting of the variance is, does not harm the public interest. So from here on in, it's up to you to convince them, give me that.
We get-
We thank you for your time. I'm sorry?
I said, we kind of, we addressed that a little bit. The unique limitations is, the wetland was in the center of the property.
Right.
So, and then there was no harm to the public.
Who delineated the wetland, Kay?
I'm not sure. Did she? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Linda, you have that recorded okay?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, let's go back now. We do have the licenses and permits to complete the zoning and building permits were taken care of. We do have a renewal alcohol beverage license application for the-
Sevastipool.
I'm looking. Institute S.L.B. Athletic Club.
Good luck.
No, it's not you. Not unless you want a liquor license too.
All right. Do we need to take action?
Yes, please. Everything is in order. All the paperwork has been filed. It has been on file at least fifteen days prior to granting the license. The agent and auxiliary questionnaire is complete, and the fees have been paid, and this is a renewal of a seasonal license from May first to October thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen.
Very good. Do we have a motion, please?
We'll move that we approve the temporary license second.
Seasonal, seasonal license.
All in favor, signify with a say no.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, pending business, first item would be the homeowner-wellwater testing program with the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point, and we'll need a status report here. Linda, you've been in tune with all this and have the dates. Do you want to give us a short summary here?
Yes, we do. We recapped this at the annual meeting last week. The town of Sevastipool, the town of Jacksonport, and the town of Sturgeon Bay will be participating in a well-water testing procedure to be conducted by the University of Stevens Point. We will do advertising the week of June thirteenth. Each town is advertising on their own with a contribution from the Door County Economic Environmental Council to help cover those costs of promotion. So those will run in both the advocate and Peninsula Pulse. The week of June twenty-sixth, the, anyone wishing to have their well-water tested will need to call the office and place an order for a sample bottle. And then probably the week of June twenty-ninth, perhaps July first, will be the deadline for ordering your bottle and picking it up. It must be paid for at the time you pick up the bottle. The cost is one hundred and ten dollars for a complete test. There are variations on that test available at lesser cost, but the complete package is one hundred and ten dollars. And then on Tuesday, July eighth, the bottles need to be returned to the office here, no later than eleven a.m., and then somebody will be delivering them to Stevens Point, and we'll probably need a few coolers, because they should be kept fairly cool on our drive to Stevens Point. Now, this is right after the Fourth of July weekend, so we're hoping for some participation.
Students are taking them back, aren't they?
They're doing the testing, but we have to deliver them.
To Stevens Point.
To Stevens Point, yes.
Richard, are you going to help with that, or?
Actually drive the bottles to Stevens Point?
No, I meant making sure that the dates are-
I can assist with the procedure.
Okay, and the other is, on the bottom half of the sheet, you see where the Peninsula Pulse is a two-hundred-and-five-dollar expenditure, and the advocate at two ninety-five, so that almost a five-hundred dollars-
Yep, we'll eat up our five-hundred dollars.
It's like five-hundred dollars.
But we can put it in the community column. We can put it on the board out front, and-
Okay.
So we have some other resources to get the word out.
And it probably won't be publicized.
One suggestion I might make, it seems, it seems a little bit like a waste of money to have three communities each run a quarter-page ad. I would think that if you put the three communities together, you could run a half-page ad, and would get a lot more visibility, and you'd not spend any more money, and all you would be adding is the word Sevastipool-Sturgeon Bay, and have we approached them on that at all?
Um, yes. Sturgeon Bay definitely wants to go on their own, and I have talked to the clerk from Jacksonport, and we are, we may do a joint one.
Okay. I mean, I think we give a little more visibility out of it rather than redundancy.
Very good.
Okay.
All right, good idea. Hopefully it all works out.
How are the bottles getting to Stevens Point? How's the transportation of actual samples to Stevens Point?
Uh, I think we need to get a few coolers, and then we put them in the cool, like, so you bring in your sample at eight o'clock on Tuesday morning, I'm going to stick it in the refrigerator.
Right.
When it's time to go to Stevens Point, I'm going to pack them all up in a cooler that I've borrowed from various supervisors.
And you're actually going to drive them there?
Uh, Elise and I might drive together, if we can get-
All right, okay.
There is, you did mention-
If somebody else wants to volunteer and drive, be my guest.
How many banks can I get on my cycle?
You did mention at the annual meeting that there was a charge for this, too.
Correct. The fee is one hundred and ten dollars for the complete comprehensive test. There are some variations. I don't have it in front of me right now, but, you know, say you only want to test for these minerals or these chemicals, there's different steps, but the complete test, the most comprehensive one, is one hundred and ten dollars. The results are kept confidential. You do not need to disclose that to anyone. However, a map will prepare, be prepared with the locations of the test wells indicated on the map.
And sample water is available after testing?
Yes, I will be sampling each bottle as it comes in.
Yeah.
Okay, Lottie, is that something you're going to put up on your video?
I was thinking about making a video, yeah, for that.
Doesn't have to be anything really super, but get the message down.
We could use people like you to give a little knowledge.
No, I think Dick would be nice. He's not only the chairman of the committee, he can-
We'll do something.
Thank you very much.
Is there a minimum or a maximum on the number of tests, or?
Well, we thought it was a hundred, but they've reduced it now to forty, so forty total.
From each municipality?
No, total.
From all three?
Total, yeah.
Total for examples?
We aren't going to identify the people that have bad water, but we will put a red ribbon at their road, right?
Well, it'll be on the map, I guess.
You said forty total from all three couches?
It was originally, they, they were asking for a hundred. Yeah, originally they were asking for a hundred, now they said forty would, forty, and they'd still do it.
Yeah.
So we'll see how it goes.
We should be able to get that, I would hope.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Let's make it work. Pending business on Shower Road, I am to report that the trimming of the trees by Algovah Lumber, or their person that they hired, to get the dead birch, or the infected birch.
Beech?
Uh, seventy-five, beech, rather, I'm sorry, beech, from seventy-five feet of the-
Oh, wait a minute.
Center line.
Is this Shower Road, or are you talking about WD?
Your question was what?
Are you talking about Shower Road or WD?
I'm talking about WD first.
Oh, okay.
And it also goes into Shower Road.
All right.
And I talked to them this morning, and this is the latest and greatest. They are running into more beeches that they found that they need to remove, and it's more so not only that it's infected, but it is because of a safety feature, not only for those that might fall into the road, but for those that fall into the trail. When they complete WD to the dunes, they will go up to Cave Point, and that also has on both sides of Shower Road need to be trimmed back and cleaned up. Following that, which they should complete this week, they will get into the north end of Shower from Cave Point Drive, or Cave Point Park, to the Jacksonport Town Line, and they will remove the dead trees and the infected beech trees, and clear the way for the widening project on Shower Road. This has been after an inspection by the forester, and also the people from the DNR. And it is with their blessing that those trees will be removed. It appears that the highway department will be there, doing the reconstruction on that section of Shower, perhaps as early as a week from this Wednesday. So you will see some activity there. In exchange for removal of the trees, the park wanted to save some of the bitter, dead or sawn trees to see if they can use any of the wood for their purposes, and they will be cut to eight-foot lengths. And let me go as far as I can with the rest here, just to give you an idea of what is happening on our roads and on the roads in our area. The county highway department will be grinding and pulverizing some areas of County Trunk Highway T from Highway fifty-seven to Bagnall Road. It will be almost as a reconstruct with two lifts of, I believe it's two and a quarter inches.
T from, from fifty-seven to Bagnall?
Correct.
Okay.
So if you know where Alburnside lives?
Yep.
That would be the Bagnall Road. They do have to go back, or to the north, the last time around, they replaced the culvert, and that has settled a little bit, and they will resurface that area as well. The town Egg Harbor will do Monument Point Road. I don't have from where to where, but they will. The county highway department will also do Riley Bay Road in the south, and as well they'd have a large project on Washington Island. It will be the picking up of the existing pavement or blacked out, and going from there, apparently the road broke up because of all the dredging that they're doing on the most recent activity at the, at the launch or at the ferry line. So that stuff will be, they think they'll get into it. They want to get it done by July first, but not sure. Our projected goal on Shower Road will have that all completed with it being paved by Memorial Weekend. Sounds a little ambitious, but they think they can have it done.
Wow.
Also, this week, starting yesterday, and continuing with the rest of the week, you will see the sweepers in the area who will be doing Bark Road and Love Court and some of the hills that are deeply saturated with sand and stuff.
We're in our neighborhood already, isn't we?
On that note, for consideration for next year, if we think about replacing some of the areas that we treat with sand and go to salt, we may get a little bit better. I, I, I think when I see the amount of sand and aggregate and material that's laid down during the winter, it, you know, in the springtime, it gets to be like a, well, I'd consider it a hazard for two-wheel transportation.
Salt has, has a better effect perhaps, but yet the temperature kind of directs what they can put down to make the road safe.
Putting down salt is an option, though.
Very good. Or that liquid spray as well.
Well, yeah, but I, I would think we should consider-
Okay, we'll keep that in mind for our road tour and have it as an item.
All right.
And if I don't, you can remind me.
I will.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? Did I cover that okay?
Yeah, I think you covered it very well.
Ah, thank you. And if you get a complaint, most recently came on Clark Lake West of Brower, Ryer. It has a definite dip in the road, and we don't know if it's the settling of the top half of the culvert, or falling underneath the culvert, but in either respect, more likely than not, it will require a, a new culvert or some activity there. They're going to monitor it and make sure that we don't have-
Top half of the culvert.
A while back, we did a resolution or ordinance on allowing sewer lines under the road.
Yeah.
Do we have a similar rule for power lines? Is there any procedures people are supposed to follow?
We're going to incorporate that in everything. Linda's already put it down as a road item that we can talk about.
We had a situation earlier this month where our power company saw it through the road, and then it did a temporary repair job on it. I can understand the temporary repair until they can get hot mixed blacktop to fix it proper, but, uh, there were no requests, no permits, no action. They just went ahead and did it.
That's correct. We do have others. This one is on Martin Road, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we do have a couple of others.
We do.
We had one right over here on the floor.
Yep, our country.
That we had to go back and repair. So it should not be at our cost. And I think it's getting the information to the power companies and/or whatever. So that they are aware of the fact-
With that new law, too, after the blow-up, if they cross a public road, they have to belong to Digger's Hotline.
Yep.
Correct? Anything that crosses a public road. So they, the owner himself, I would think, would be liable to get that located. You know?
But at this point right now, if we were to go down and tear up Martin Road, we don't even know that line is in there.
Yeah, well, this is-
Correct.
It's a homeowner's.
It's a private?
Yes.
Private.
Actually, it should be owned by the utility company. The utility company owns from the pole to the meter on the house.
Correct.
So, uh-
So then it should be in the records.
We have the, the letter went out to the builder. Did we get a re- a response?
Yes, I, I sent a letter to the builder just to put them on notice, because obviously there was like an eight to nine-inch gap there, to put them on notice that the board would, would be addressing this on their road tour. She called. She was very apologetic and, um, was gonna be talking to the utility company. And like Supervisor Tyce said, they did patch it, but it wasn't at our request. And I think the board, you know, it should be done right, so that's something that the board can address when you go out.
Alright, thanks. Next item of business would be the room tax reform and an update. Chuck, did you, uh?
Wisconsin Hotel and Lodging Association, almost two years ago, started trying to get the room tax laws reformed. Room tax has been around the state of Wisconsin for quite some time. Originally, the municipality could put the room tax on and they could use one hundred percent of the money for any way they saw fit. As times changed, it became a thirty-seventy split between the municipality and a designated, uh, advertising agency for the, uh, room tax for the lodging industry. Gary Byes and a Rush jumped in on this without doing any background checking and, uh, along with a few other representatives, made a real mess out of it in the beginning, never bothering to speak with the tax-collecting authorities, just the Hotel and Lodging Association. Original bill failed. They tried to re-modify it again. They're getting an extremely hard push against it from the municipalities that retain the one hundred percent of the funds. The Door County Tourism Zone Commission is probably the model commission for the state of Wisconsin as it is today. We did have some lobbying in on the original bill and did a little work with it. Tried to explain to Byes what the situation was. And to not mess with the way it is run today, just get the problem, the grandfather problems corrected. But, uh, as the letter states, they're not, uh, too interested in bringing this forth right now because it is a, a real contested, uh, bill. And I believe they are more concerned with their reelection right now. So this was one of the bills that was taken off of the floor. It will not be discussed this year or this session. It will be coming back again, though.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, the next item would be Sergeant and Peterson. And the, uh, any independent inspection limited group. Brett, uh, Timmy? He had, uh, sent them a request indicating that he would like to know the status of what they were and how they were gonna fix the commercial or come into compliance with the, uh, commercial code for their auto repair business on West Jones Lane. The last letter gave him until July of two thousand thirteen. I was contacted a couple of months ago to see if we could get a status report from that. And it generated the, uh, the information that he used to go there. And in turn, Linda received was an email.
Yes.
Stating that they are trying to comply. They do have some obstacles they need to, um, get over, namely monetary, and I guess we all have that problem. And, uh, they did go to a builder for the design. In my talking with them, uh, they haven't really come in compliance as of yet, but we'll wait on it, see if we can push them to comply or push them along. The other one was for Jeff Peterson on Vectal. The information is that he got a letter as well, and he indicated that as of December thirty-first, uh, he had closed his business. He, and he had told me repeatedly, and I know he, that I saw the sign in the window in his shop. So, uh, as far as I'm concerned, he is no longer in business, and did Brett mention anything about that, Linda, or not?
Just that he might, um, I don't know, if you start seeing vehicles in the yard or something like that, it might be a little suspicious. Obviously, Jeff's letter does indicate that he is, has discontinued business.
Okay. Don't like to put anybody out of business, but I guess we have codes to comply with. They're oftentimes for their own protection as well as anyone else. New business, the Land Commission update on current and future land use. John, did you have anything you wish to offer?
Um, just that the Plan Commission is, uh, stopping all efforts, um, for the, uh, uh, let's see, that plan.
Increase that to me.
The, um, future, uh, planning maps, we are going to address at our next meeting. The rezoning around the mile within Valmy and, um, Institute and around Sturgeon Bay, we're gonna put on hold and use the, use it as a tool and a resource for future commission rezoning, uh, partitions. And also, the Plan Commission is working on a press release to let everybody know about that. That we are just putting it on hold and using it for, uh, study material for future. So, and then Linda gave me a note that says, um, the Planning Department has the potential rezoning presentation on its website. That is, which one is that? Is that the one we did with everybody here, Linda?
Um-
Or is it theirs that they're just putting out now?
Theirs that they're putting out. It's his, it is a draft.
Okay. So that would be, that would be the one that, okay, that they just put out. And then there's, uh, Open House, uh, Door County Comprehensive Plan and Farmland Preservation Plan two thousand thirty-five. There's an open house at two to six P.M., Tuesday, April twenty-second, at their Peninsula Room, first floor Government Center. So another name? No.
It's like tomorrow, oh, and there's a two-thirty presentation and another one, I think, at four o'clock. Correct. Okay, Charter Communication changes to all the digital and elimination of the analog channel ninety-seven. You enlighten us on that, or?
Sure, um, well, just what they said. We won't have ninety-seven anymore. There won't be any analog channels at all. But, um, nine-eight-six will remain as, as always. Uh, you have to get a converter box to receive it. Or a card for your computer, your TV, if it's, if you have a pretty new TV. Card takes the place of the converter box. But everything is gonna be scrambled, so nobody can steal signals anymore.
Oh. Alright, questions?
So people can find us, if they've been seeing us in ninety-seven, they won't see us anymore. Let's hope we can explain it to them.
Okay, the next one then would be the Beechbark Disease. I think I covered that one pretty well. The Roadwork two thousand fourteen, the tour and the information on a need for fix and repair. I have already talked to a couple of the members here. I need to move that, uh, road tour date from May second to May the seventeenth. That'll go on a Saturday. And we'll keep the same time at nine o'clock. So if you wanna take a minute to, to see if you have a problem with that, Dan, or Chuck, the other three of us can make that date.
May seventeen?
May seventeen at nine- in the morning.
I don't have my calendar updated.
Okay.
Look at it.
Very well. And the, uh, the renewal, uh, if anyone has any roads that they want us to take a look at, make sure they contact the office or contact me or one of the supervisors. Renewal of the Animal Control Officer Agreement with Mark Richards would be next. Linda, you've been in on that. You wanna?
Um, in going through our files, I noticed that we have not renewed our contract with Mark Richards. Mark Richards, he's been our Animal Control Officer for, um, quite a few years now. I called, I had sent, um, Mark the existing contract and followed up with a phone call, and he has requested that, um, an increase in the per-call. Right now, Mark receives one hundred dollars per month. That's a base rate. He gets it just for being the Animal Control Officer. And he has requested an increase in the call fee from thirty dollars to thirty-five dollars. Um, plus he is entitled to reimbursement for mileage as well, and any overnights in which he has to board animals if he can't get them to the Humane Society. So the contract is, is the same except for the increase from thirty to thirty-five on the per-call basis.
Okay, anyone have a problem with that?
I just noted, um, number seven, item number seven, it says cancellation of this agreement may be made by either party without cause during the time period. So it's, it's a contract that can be broken at any time. Is that, is that what that means? That's what it means.
Yeah, I think on either part, we didn't, uh, I don't, I don't think he has a whole bunch of competition on-
And I don't think he really wants to cancel it, so. Okay.
Yeah, okay. We can amend that if you like, but-
So we can, if for whatever reason, we can, it can be canceled. Okay.
Well, we say without cause, so. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'm glad we approved the contract with Mark Richards.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other comment? All the favorites, segment five, let's say nine.
Aye.
Bose. And that's carried. Wisconsin Towns Association dues.
Let me back up to that contract just one.
Okay.
Item number six. We're starting it in April. We're going to end it in December, or would we run it through April?
Two thousand fifteen.
It, it had, it had been on an annual basis, Chuck, from, um, April to April for some reason. So I just arbitrarily picked that we would make it through the end of the year.
So you want it to end on the end of the fourth calendar year, then?
I think that's when we started.
Two thousand and, two thousand and fifteen, and then we'll get back on our annual.
Okay. Wisconsin Towns Association, our dues for the year is seven hundred and forty-five dollars. It's, uh, on population, plus a so many cents per person of population with the cap, about three hundred and fifty. That's already budgeted for?
Yes, it was.
So we don't have to worry about that. Let's, okay, workers' compensation reimbursement from the, for the first responders. It was for the EMRs only this year from the county of Door. For the year two thousand thirteen, received a contribution of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And I believe the same dollar amounts will be coming in two thousand and fourteen.
You said that was only for the EMRs?
Correct.
I was just curious on why they had the Fire Department, FD, on there.
Well, how many EMRs do we have?
Thirteen.
I think that's how it was based.
He's saying the-
On the other towns.
It might be FD and EMR.
They have a fire department?
Those guys have to work double duty.
We don't have a fire department.
Correct.
They ride the fire truck and they-
But the Fire Department is a town.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. I can find out.
I was just curious on, whatever. I suppose each town is paying for it, so they-
Okay, let's go to nine to ten have been taken care of. Eleven, the business owners and workers' compensation. Rural insurance. And that's very, very straightforward.
May I ask in the future that we, um, have a request for proposals or bids? We did not have it this year.
I don't believe we have ever gone out for a request for a proposal.
We have.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we have.
I, I only say that because of personal experience that, um, for this particular type of insurance, I think it's pretty competitive. There would just be a suggestion that we, we would consider, request?
Well, we're not too late because this goes from June first through June first, so we can figure so on. You wanna make a note on that and, uh?
Well, could I have some clarification, please? If we're putting it out on an RFP, that means, um, I would need to publish, unless you have some companies in mind, and we're gonna pick and choose with companies.
Well, no, why don't you just run a small ad that we're looking for the compensation, uh, employee liability policies for- employee liability policies for the town and for particulars to call the office. Be the best way to do it, and you can run down to all the various coverages that we do have.
That's going to be a job.
Yeah, and they'll get a hold of it, so they'll want to do it.
So you do want me to run a small ad?
Correct. And let them know that they can obtain the information by contacting the office.
And this is up June?
Well, we shouldn't have to give anyone else in the insurance industry, the ad start with all the work that has been accomplished.
No, I'm just, I'm wondering if you can get it accomplished.
The period is June 1st to June 1st.
June 1st, you're going to have to put in the ad that it has to be backed by some deadline to.
I mean, this year would be difficult.
Well, let's try it this year then.
See what's up.
Richard will have his request honored, so.
And the specifications are pretty much already provided, so.
Well, when we did it previously, I kind of made a synopsis of our coverages and the things that we need to have covered, and then.
What we're covering right now.
Right.
Okay, there's not too much, I don't think we're too late in doing it. Today is 21st of April, and this wouldn't take effect until June 1st. See what kind of response we get. And number 12, we'll bring that back down the road and see what happens. Wisconsin DNR Knowles Nelson Stewartship Program Land Acquisition, parcel 16, town 28, north range 27, east 17.27 acres in Woodin.
Why does this come to us so late? I mean, I knew they bought this last year. I still understand why they tell us.
I think now the DNR is anticipating a purchase from the Nature Conservancy.
Well, what even more cumbersome was that on the very last sentence of the first paragraph, it says to the town, "Please forward the appraisals to the assessor when you are finished reviewing it."
She actually returned my call.
We thought this was kind of unusual. Why don't they do it?
They don't know where our assessor is.
Nobody called you?
Oh, she returned my call. I said, "Well, I'll be seeing the assessor on May 30th. Can't wait until then so that I don't have to pay extra photocopying and postage," and she said, "That's fine."
Okay.
Forty-six pages.
Forty-six pages.
Forty-six.
For a piece of land.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds like a government job.
What has to do with?
Okay.
That's good.
Right, yes.
All right, the next item then, the Approval Vouchers, Bills and Claims. You all had a chance to take a look at it.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers, bills and claims.
I'd love to second that motion.
Oh, excellent. No problem. Questions or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it was February, March, and March and April, so Correspondents. Door County Comprehensive Plan and Farmland Preservation is tomorrow, 2:00 to 4:00, and 6:00 o'clock, the Government Center. Door County Unit, the Wisconsin Towns Association, will have a meet and greet on May 1st at 7:00 p.m., the Town of Union as the host. Road inspection will change that to May 17. Board of Supervisors meeting for May 19 at the Town Hall. Open book on the 2014 assessment is Friday, May 30th, from 10:00 until 12:00. And Friday, May 30th, the Town Hall. First one was the open book, and the second, how confused am I? Open book.
Open book on Friday, May 30th. Board of Review.
Okay, do we have any agenda items for the next meeting?
I have one item from Correspondents, if you can back up for a second.
Sure.
Broadband grants. I read this, and of course, it came to us right after everything's been closed out for applications and opportunities. But to me, if I read this, and maybe Laddie knows more, or maybe Dick does, whatever, it would appear that we could apply for some money and maybe target an area that doesn't get, you know, broadband, like Clark Lake or some of the other areas where there's some density. So maybe we can figure out some way to go after this next year and at least make an attempt to satisfy the itch of some of our constituents. This all was done last day for submission, was March 21st. I mean, in about two weeks, they'll tell them who won.
Yeah.
Broadband grants, it's in the Correspondents, Laddie, after the Fire Chief's report. I can give you mine. But I mean, if it's something they do year after year.
Yeah.
It might be something to pursue.
Okay, very good.
Well, just to discuss that a little bit, definition of underserved.
No service would certainly fill that.
What's our transmission rate from here?
What do you mean by transmission rate?
Internet for broadband coverage?
You mean the speed?
Speed.
Well, that's interesting. It's supposed to be 6 meg, 60 megabit download, and I forget what up.
Five. It's supposed to be here, but that may not be, that's what the new rate is supposed to be after May 1st, for residential customers that now have 30. It's supposed to be posted at 60.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
And broadband is defined as?
Fiber.
Fiber optic speed. What speed is that?
Depends upon what the equipment is pushing it out there.
Okay. So just, I mean, fiber optic, well, the question I brought up is because the school district has been thinking about bringing fiber optic.
Don't be glomming onto our broadband thing.
But I mean, if we can, well, John, I mean, John, just to discuss it a little bit, the fiber optic, does fiber optics come down County Trunk P. or not, do you know?
No.
So is there a fiber optic cable on 57?
It's right out here. There's the cable out here. What they were trying to do, though, is the school was, when I researched this with the guy at the county, I can't think of his name off the top of my head.
Tim Mullin.
Tim Mullin. They were trying to acquire a piece of fiber optic that was their own, actually purchase it, so that they're not leasing it from Charter, which gave them some options for transmission and stuff. But there's fiber running out here, but then when it goes to the house or into the building, it goes coax or depending on the company.
I guess we'll have to look into that then.
Yeah.
Because at one time, we talked about bringing fiber optics down P. from 42, but the cost was.
What's the fiber optic? Linda was talking about the fiber optic they're bringing back.
AT&amp;T is bringing it from Jacksonport to Valmy, to Institute.
Okay, that's coming.
Now, who can log on to that is another question, but they are bringing it.
That's a future project.
Possibly.
Okay, all right. Okay, enough said.
Okay, a couple of comments. Number one is, I don't know if you guys went up and took a look at Chuck Tyse's kiosk for the float that he had constructed.
Oh, yes.
And put together for St. Patrick's Day. And we thank him for doing the excellent job that he did on behalf of the kiosk company. Who's that, they what? What's our group?
Schmickel.
Door County Postal.
Door County Postal, Postal Biologist. And before we leave, put a little light on the subject. Linda is going to explain why we have that lamp over there.
Oh, yes. Jason Bury from Sturgeon Bay Utilities called me.
Well, John, you want to go over and open it up so you take a look at what it sold out?
Called me, and then he ended up bringing out this light fixture at the CNW Mill intersection where we have a couple lamps, and those are Sturgeon Bay Utility lamps. A few of the bulbs are burnt out. So to replace a bulb in the old fixture, the bulbs are $18. The old fixtures are kind of your old yard light type hooded. If the fixture needs replacing, and he's not sure that it does, but to replace that with light-for-light, the old style, $50. He brought this new model out, obviously, that's all faceted on the glass there, so you have like better light diffusion or whatever. If we want to upgrade to the deluxe model, that would be $100. Like I said, he's not sure if the fixtures need replacing or not. Either fixture takes the same bulb, so I promised him that I would run this by the board if they need replacing. These are supposedly more durable, less wind, or more wind resistant and.
More parts.
More parts, yes.
Linda, why would we pay for a replacement bulb? We don't pay for that with WPS.
Because when they burn out, you got to replace.
With WPS, when you have a, when you pay for the light, they maintain it. So I'm just kind of curious.
We have replaced, I know we have paid for bulbs before through Sturgeon Bay Utilities. Have we paid for bulbs with WPS? I'm not sure.
Well, on a yard light program with WPS, if you rent it from them, they maintain the unit and the bulbs. It may be different on commercial, I don't know that, but it just seems strange that if you're renting it, that you'd pay for the bulb, so.
I'm certain we have paid for bulbs in the past.
Hmm.
That I'm certain of.
Another reason to take some of those lights out.
Okay, think about it. When were we to give him an answer or whatever?
Maybe when you go out on the road tour, if you want to look at the fixtures.
All right.
Because I'm supposed to be giving you a list of all the fixture locations anyway.
Very good.
So.
John's our line, then he can.
Okay.
Can you bring your spike?
No, but I can bring my bucket truck.
Yeah, John will follow, so does bucket truck.
We'll go check all the bulbs.
That's exactly a great idea.
Okay. So I'll just let him know that it's going to be a while yet.
Okay, otherwise, in the event that there's a light that does need to be changed or a bulb that needs to be replaced, either they call here or else they call me at home and tell me about it, so. And I think we do pay for them. Okay, agenda items for next meeting? Anyone have anything? Other than that, the RFP would be one.
Could we, perchance, revisit the infamous buildings by CNW?
Sure.
See if anybody comes up with another brainstorm on, and the Moore, and the Moore Block Building.
Okay.
Maybe a couple of those, I don't know. Just a thought.
Moore and, what's the name of that cross from the, what's the name, Muscat?
Muscat, probably.
Okay, very well. I'll put it down.
Did you say another location?
The Moore, the Moore Block Building.
Moore Block Building.
Oh, on the corner of Moore and Whitefish Bay?
Old Highway.
Old Highway, right.
Oh, yes.
Okay, no other business? Motion would be in order to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And.